Good evening, Mr. Board President, Superintendent Members of the Board, Audience. I'd just like to introduce Sergeant Major Barella and Gunny Garcia. I'll introduce our OTC.
Thank you, Mr. Autry. Dr. Space, Mr. Esteban, thank you for having us today. Also, I'd like to say a Happy Veterans' Day to yourself, Mayor Hicks, all the other veterans represented here, Mr. Chavez. As you know, that's an important cultural day to us, so it's an important day. We're here to recognize the drill team. Last year, we were here showing you our state championship. We were a little concerned. We graduated 12 of our best cadets. You're always unsure year to year, but the good thing about it is we had 60 great freshmen, sophomores, and juniors ready to take over. And they did. They started out great. We went to a summer joint cadet leadership camp at the New Mexico National Guard in Santa Fe, and they represented GCC as well. We, once school started, we had numerous requests automatically for color guards, drill team performances, Main Street Fall Fiesta, Cold War Patriots, the New Mexico School Board Association. We just did the 2014 National Tribal GIs Conference in Hellkirk and Sify. There, the Cub Scouts Veterans Recognition Dinner, seven home football games. So it keeps us pretty busy. All that to get ready for the Duke City Drill Meet. That's the first drill meet of the year. They kind of gauge all the schools, what are you going to look like? We had gone to that drill meet in prior years, and some of the Eagles are represented here for that drill meet. They kind of gauge the strength of your program. And I was very proud to see that our students here, if you could all stand up. They took up most of the chairs. We apologize for that. But they're the ones that brought home that Eagle with everything else, you know, that was on our plate. So I'd just like...[135.22][135.22][applause] You may be seated. Again, I would just like to thank the Board for allowing us to be here. On a personal note, I'd like to thank all the Board members that stood behind me this summer and believing in what I do and I've done over the years. I'd just like to thank you for backing me on that. I'd like to thank Ms. Chavez. She's always represented the district at our annual Marine Corps Birthday Ball, almost since I've been here, I believe. So we, again, we do appreciate that. We did another note, start that physical education credit. I've been working on that for 10 years. And I'll let Sergeant Major Barella address that.
Thank you, Gunny. Good evening, Board members, fellow citizens. Appreciate this opportunity. The structure has always been and will continue to be leadership. At the root level of success is leadership. You take a look at these fine young men and women here in the cadet program, and each one of them has a responsibility. It starts at the corporal level. We call that the small unit level. They're responsible for three cadets under their charge. They're instructed to watch over them, train them, get them through hard times, be a role model for them. And they've done that quite marvelously, and we're extremely proud of that. So leadership is the foundation of the cadet program. As we speak about the physical education program, it is a nationally accredited program, and we're putting that into our curriculum, and it goes from close-order drill on Wednesdays to standing in uniform inspection on Thursday, and then Friday, we do a full physical fitness experience, and they know what the experiences are there. Just recently, we completed the youth physical fitness test, and we'll finalize that this year. We do that twice a year. And along with that, the leadership also is leading from the front, so they'll be the first ones on the pullover bar before the young private is on that pullover bar. Gunny and I attempt to get on that pullover bar every once in a while, but I'd already told her sometimes struggling for that. So, again, we'd like to thank you all for presenting the P credit to our cadets for two successful years of Marine Corps JROTC program. Okay, thank you all very much.[277.14][277.14][applause]
You don't want to be rude, but we have to leave to get ready for the Veterans' Day performance, so I got to get the kids in uniform. Of course, you're all welcome.
Before you leave, I want to say congratulations to all the students. I know that I had gotten a call from RTC. Students want their color guard to come down, and I'll work with Dr. Space to try to get that transportation to get them there.
Okay, sir.
What day was that?
I believe that's next Friday, 21st.
Okay.
They wanted a drill team performance and a color guard, I believe.
And before you go, if you wait about five minutes, we have a flag donation we would like you to take responsibility for.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the Board would like to meet these young people personally and show their appreciation.
Stand up. Go around.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
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 Congratulations.
Perfect.
Nice.
And then that one of them, their own.
Yeah.
Because those are each year.
So there was, there was six years after that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go on with Agenda B, Laguna Acoma High School.
Mr. President, Mr. President, Members of the Board, Dr. Space, once again, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy Veterans' Day. I know that I probably talk loud enough as it is, but, Mr. Esteban, it was nice to see you over at Seboyete Elementary. That was a fantastic performance they had out there today. We did at Laguna Acoma High School, celebrate the birthday of the Marines yesterday. I believe it was the 239th birthday. They had Master Gunnery Sergeant Barella and Garcia. I think the entire community here and state really looks up to the Grants High School JROTC program. I feel that you guys are the best at what you do, year after year. So congratulations, congratulations from us, because you're the type of program that we definitely try to emulate there. So you do, you do do a fantastic job with that. We, I left Laguna Acoma High School Gymnasium, and our volleyball team was still practicing. We were going to recognize Malika Bahi for being All-State and academic All-State. Fortunately, the girls won the district championship this last Friday, so they're still participating. If she doesn't show up in a few minutes here, we'll have to get her after their season. But I know that she was sweating, and she probably wanted to clean herself up. So we appreciate that, and thank you for not pulling me into executive session before the meeting. That was very much appreciated. I do appreciate that. So, thank you, and...
Tom will go ahead and give you the...
Thank you.
I'm more just in case. So take some feedback from your outstanding performance as an academic All-State athlete. Do you think she's coming?
I don't know. I'll wait another 10 minutes or so. I believe she was.
Okay. Well, she shows up...
Yeah, we'll stop what we're doing. We'll...
Okay, I'll wait. Thank you, and I know these people have to get the 11th day, the 11th hour of 11-11-11. They have to get to there, so I will turn it over, and thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We go on to academic presentations. National High School, GHS, PAC, flag donation from Bio.
Mr. Board President, Superintendent Members of the Board, I'd like to introduce Steve. I'm going to get him on again. RTOC, Bio Pelle with the presentation.
President Esteban and Board members, on behalf of the staff and employees of Bio Pelle International, we would like to present this American flag, New Mexico State flag, and POW flag for the sole use in the new Performing Arts Center at Grants High School. We hope this will be a beneficial use for this beautiful building that will benefit the entire community.
[applause]
Take out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I get a shot with the Board and Mr. Bartosi? Can I speak down here? Okay, there it is. Get to the right side. Let's see here. Let's see. It's good. There we go, right there. Right just, Deon just looked, right there. You're good. You were fine.
Oh.
Cool, thank you.[693.22][693.22][applause]
That is an action item. We have to give, I'll make a recommendation that we accept the gift of the flag donation from Bio. There's a recommendation by the superintendent. Is there a motion for this? Only favor sign by saying aye. Opposed name? If you want to be, it's an action item, NMSU operating MOU.
Chairman Esteban, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Space, every fifth year we come to you to review our operating agreement. You have a copy in your packet. It has not changed from the previous one that was from 2009 to 2013, short of the names on the signature pages and the dates. So I, two of the roles that the advisory board has is to approve our annual budget, and you created us, the school board created us, through this operating agreement with New Mexico State. So I stand for any questions you may have about the operating agreement.
Are there any questions? John, Dr. Space?
I would recommend approval of the operating agreement as per...
All right, I make a motion to approve. Sorry. Mr. Stewart? John? Only favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed name?
Thank you. We will present it to our Board of Regents after December 12th. Now that you've approved it, and we will get a final copy to Dr. Space and to Brighty for your files thereafter. Thank you.
Next item C, NMSU bond proposal.
Mr. Esteban, Chairman Esteban, Members of the Board, Superintendent Space, I spoke your ear off on the 28th, and I apologize for that long presentation, but it felt necessary to be able to explain to you why we're doing this historic request to you in 46 years of our campus. And I will not do a presentation this evening. We do have a letter that President Cruz others from NMSU signed. It's asking you to support it. We would share that with you, with the Board members, in support of our ability to go to the voters to request our first historical local general obligation bond. And as they were, as the gentleman to my right over here, Leo Valdez, our GO bond advisor is here to answer any questions you may have that we didn't have time for the other evening. And additionally, I have Dwayne Brown, who is an attorney with the Mondrell Law Firm to his left, to Leo's left, to answer any questions you may have. Depending on your vote this evening, if you vote in favor of this, you need to sign off on the resolution that Dwayne has prepared. And Dwayne can stand for any questions, and perhaps a few minutes to discuss how this works at the other campuses in a very brief way. Would you like him to say something, sir?
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, the NMSU is asking for permission to do the bond, but I guess there's a lot of technical, I mean, a lot of options about as far as when that could happen. Is that correct? And do we need to talk about that now?
And Dwayne could answer those things, because those are all the guidelines.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, Dr. Space, Dwayne Brown with the Mondrell Performing Law Firm. And with regard to the specific question you asked, Mr. Stewart, there are options to present this bond question at a special election that would be called for another time besides the February 3 general election that, where we combine this election with the school board election. So, for example, we could come back to you in later in the year, next year, and ask for a special election to be held late spring, early summer. That's, that's one option that is available should you decide to pursue that.
But I mean, is, is there a request to be on the, in coordination with the school board election?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Stewart, the specific resolution in front of you tonight would have this election at the same time as the regular school board election on February 3rd. And that's customary principally, just because there's usually cost savings involved when you combine elections as opposed to having the regular school board election and then a special election. For example, there are Doniana Community College District, last Thursday night approved a resolution very similar to this, asking for a $15 million district GO bond election to be put on the ballot, same time as the Gadsden, Hatch, and Las Cruces School Board Election on February 3rd. In Valencia County, last Tuesday night, the Valencia County Board approved, putting a $16 million question in front of the voters at the same time as well, and with the Villan and Los Lunes Board elections. So it's, it's a common practice to do it this way. I believe San Juan Community College up in Farmington is doing it as well, coming up on February 3rd. But, having said all that, I'll go back to my original answer. You could have a standalone special election for this bond question.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess I mention it, I don't know, you know, how everyone feels about this, but I mention it because if, if it is an issue, you know, for the Board for having an in coordination with the school board election, and you might feel different for being separate, that could be considered. But this is, this is to be part of the school board election.
Great. Anybody else? I don't have any more questions. No?
Yes, I would recommend to the Board to defer action on this proposal until next November. And I make this recommendation for two reasons. First, I believe we need to keep it separate from our board election, and it should be a standalone. Second, you know, I've been here a little more than a year, and it's become obvious to me that we have several building projects that we need to determine where the funding streams are going to be and whether or not we may have to go before the voters. So we're going to be working on that with our facility master plan in the spring and hopefully have it completed by the summer. And that will give us some direction as to where we're going to go in terms of the needed, much-needed expansion, for example, at Cabero and some of our other facility issues. So that would be my recommendation.
And you heard the recommendation from the superintendent. Is there a motion to this effect?
Well, can I comment?
Sure.
You know, I guess the thing I feel badly for Dr. Casados in is she's been told year after year after year to wait till next year, and she's done that, and here we are, and now we're saying, let's wait another year. So I don't know. That's a tough, tough spot.
I would also like to have just a little discussion about here. And I do see what you're saying about being opposite of not with the school board election, but Mr. Esteban and I are the only two school board members up for election, and I swore that I would never make a judgment call that might pin my either being elected or not. So I'm not afraid of that. I mean, I'm going to vote for it one way or the other anyway. So, so, I mean, I'd like to know what everybody else thinks. I mean, it's you and I right there on the ballot. Or if we're, if I'm going to run again, I'm going to run. Just like, you know, I'm going to run.
Did you get that?
Yeah, I got it. It's obvious.
So that doesn't, I mean, I appreciate your, and I can see why the separation, but, but I'm not going to let a vote here hinder my, with the way I'm going to vote, whether I'm going to get elected or not, so.
And we're just, we're talking about it, it being on the ballot or not. That's, I mean, they're asking for permission for it to be on the ballot. I support the idea of it being on the ballot and letting the community members decide. I mean, have the option. If we don't do that, they don't even get the option. You know, if it's something the community does not support, don't vote for it. But I would support it being on the ballot.
You know, it's definitely needed. You know, my only heartburn is the 300,000 kind of franchise that Dr. Casados was talking about, you know, that we have to pay New Mexico State. That still rubs me a little bit. You know, that's an awful lot of money that we pay yearly, you know, for the money to leave our community to go to New Mexico State. But, you know, and I agree with Mr. Jones, Mr. Stewart, you know, it definitely needs to be done. And, you know, if they decide to leave it up to the voters, you know, that's fine. But, you know, I'll still continue having that heartburn about the 300,000.
I have it too.
You know, and, you know, and I don't know...
They maybe need to shed some light on that to everybody else.
Yeah, well, and probably everybody, I don't know if everybody knows, but there's a franchise fee for New Mexico State, if I'm not, if I'm correct, of $300,000 a year that we pay. The money leaves our community and goes straight to Las Cruces. You know, and, you know, that leaves just a...
Let the branch, let the branch pays.
Yes. Yeah, the branch pays, you know, coming from our community, you know, from our students and all that. You know, I just wish that that money could stay in our community. Can you imagine how much you could do for, for our local branch, you know, with its renovations or...
They probably could stay, and then it'd just be that, that school up there on the hill instead of New Mexico.
Yeah, well, you know, I don't know. You know, I don't know what the franchise fees are, you know, what U&amp;M, what kind of franchise fee, franchise fees they pay, or, you know, Grand Canyon, you know, some of the other ones.
Mr. Chair, may I, may I say something about that? All, all of the community colleges pay, and it's based on our enrollment. So Donanda, for instance, pays about over a million dollars, because they're so much bigger. And U&amp;M also has an overhead fee to each of their campuses, so it's a standard practice. And I, while it's heartburn, I would tell you that we would not have the level of resource base as a small campus, because we're the smallest of the four, without the support of NMSU. For instance, we get to use their online course delivery system. They're, we're part of their HR system, so we're part of that medical package that they have. So, and we couldn't build the building with the overhead fee that we pay them. And, and this request is really about the college's first request to get local voter support to build a new facility, because we have been told by the state hiring department that without local voter support, we will never have another facility, new facility on our campus. And, and that's what's really critical. And again, I would remind you what I said at, on October 28th. Your students are our students. We normally don't get a big slew of your students right out of high school. The lottery students go elsewhere. They come to us as young adults, trying to improve their capacity. We're not recruiting students from China or other countries. Our service area is here, so your students are our students.
So what's your backup then, saying it's not passed tonight, or the voters, we then go to the voters, and it's not passed? What's your, what's your plan then?
Well, someone asked me the other evening, what happens if the board says no? And I said, it stops there.
But what's your plan? I mean, you have to have some sort of plan, you know, a five-year plan. Okay, we're going to put so much money, you know...
We, we don't have money to build a building, because we don't have that kind of revenue source. So if, basically, it's stuck here, we could not build that building. We would maybe try in a few years to come back to you to see if you were going to agree to this, so that we can go to the voters. Now, the voters, the big block is the voters. If the voters defeated, then, then we wait again for another few years to come back to you and vote at the voters. So, and I, I believe you all understand, you're not voting for the tax, you're voting to let us go to the voters to see if they're willing to support it.
Two things. I can say on the board, you have to take the interest of the school district, but I also have to look at the overall community and being, as benefiting from a move like this, because you're right, that our students are also your students. And at one point in time, we had a program where they could also get degrees, and I would hope that, you know, should the bond issue go through, that we also make those plans to bring that back, that program, so that we don't have, or the students don't have to go to the main campus for residencies, that they can obtain those bachelor's and master's degree here at the university as well. And that was a good program. I knew a lot of students that participated in that. And I have to think of not only what's good for the school district, but also what's good for the community, because our school district is a part of the community. This is where, this is where we're born and bred. And the second thing is, is that, like Sanval says, you know, there has to be a plan to, should it not be passed by the voters, where are we going to go next? Because we don't want it just to stop there. We want NMSU Grants Ranch to get bigger. I'm an alumni, you know, I want to see what's best for NMSU as well as for the Grants School District. So if that doesn't get passed, I would hope that, you know, that the Board will go back and, and look at an alternative and find, see what, what happens. There's a lot, it sounds like there's a lot of bonding before, before the, of communities in February, so we would just be one of the few. And I guess that would be, you know, the final, is to, just to make sure that we, we consider the need of the community, the BA programs, the master's programs, so that, that overall helps the community, and then our students don't go elsewhere anymore. And you're right, we don't recruit as, as much as a bigger university is doing, and that's okay. I think the smaller the university, the more one-on-one there is interaction between the colleges and the students. And with native students, that, that sometimes that's essential, because they need that one-on-one interaction. So I would just hope that, you know, we move on with that.
Just, so if, say, it's passed tonight, it's passed by the voters, how does it impact the school district's bonding capacity?
I'll make that...
Is it going to impact our capability of, say, finishing Los Alamos? I know we haven't started Los Alamos. I mean, is it going to impact our project there, money-wise, or somewhere further in our future?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sanval, with regard to the actual bonding capacity, the school district has a 6% of the assessed valuation of bonding capacity. That is completely separate from the 3% assessed valuation bonding capacity of the, of the district. So it doesn't affect your bonding capacity at all. What it does affect is you would still have to go out to the voters to access your 6% capacity, just as what the district is asking you to, to do to... capacity, just as what the district is asking you to do tonight is to allow them to go to the voters to access their 3% bonding capacity. I hope that answers your question.
So the question the board, I guess, has to ask, and you would know better than me, how many times do you go to the well? You know, you... If this bond, if you approve the bond and it goes before and it's approved, you know, next fall, I believe it's next fall, we have an SB 9 that goes before. So I don't have the answer to that because I haven't lived here in Long Island. And that is in part my concern.
So it doesn't affect it directly, but it could indirectly?
Yeah, it's... Right.
It's an opportunity once they get into the pocket two, three times.
Well, then we have to act on this. It's on the agenda that we... You have heard the recommendation.
Okay, well, his recommendation...
Go ahead.
I'll let you speak.
His recommendation is?
Is to... No, well, Dr. Space recommended not to...
Not to... Not to approve.
Not to take action.
Right. No.
Yeah, he recommended not to take action.
I recommended to defer action until next year, which would be, I would...
He's saying, what he's saying is not to support NMSU. That's what I'm gonna say. Right?
I would say, to avoid any kind of confusion, I would recommend that it not go, not be approved tonight to go before in February.
Mr. Chair, may I make a point? Every fall in early September, we go, the higher ed system goes before the state capital outlay committee for higher ed. It's comprised of DFA reps, LFC, and the higher ed department. And next fall is when they will determine what the next state geo-bond would be on the ballot in 2016. It will be decided at the legis... They will recommend to the legislature in the fall, or their hearings start in the fall and they decide around December what school will get how much in that state geo-bond. And then the legislature approves that in the legislative session in 2016 and goes to the voters in 2016. So if you defer this to November, we will have lost the opportunity to be able to get a state match. And my strategy had been if you would agree to this, and I shared a copy of the bonding capacity that we were looking at, where we have a $9 million capacity, we would ask the voters for seven. And if we could get a state match, we would decrease our request or the sale of the bonds by the amount that we got of the match. But if you defer to November, we have lost an opportunity for another three years to build this building.
Any other questions? If there's none, we have to act on this. Dr. Space has recommended to us, so I seek a motion.
Okay, well, it's still not clear. Are we... I thought it was on the agenda to vote yes, we support it to be on there, or no, we don't. Is that what we're voting for?
Yes.
All right. I just wanna make sure it was clear and not opposite.
Ask for your resolution.
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to vote and support.
You're supporting to approve?
I'm voting to... My motion is to, yeah, to approve the request and allow it to be on the ballot.
What happens to Dr. Space?
Well, that's... See, that's my question. That was my initial question. That's what...
I have a recommendation, but you don't have to accept my recommendation.
Okay.
Is that what you're doing there?
Well, that's my thought, but...
Well, if he's recommending to not approve, we actually take motion on that and you would vote against.
Okay. Okay. So is there a motion?
Is that clear? Am I doing that right?
Yeah, yes, you're right. That's why I keep asking for a motion because we have to act on that. We have to act on that first.
That's correct. I have to act on that period.
Is someone gonna make a motion based on Dr. Space's recommendation?
I hope that we act on Dr. Space's recommendation not to take action in this. So am I saying it right?
Yes.
Hold on. We're taking action regardless. It's not to take action. I mean, you can't make a motion to not take action. We're taking action by the way.
No, that's not what she said. That's not what she said. She said that. She's taking, making a motion to...
From there, whether it dies or whether it gets a second.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay. This is your call, Dr. Space.
Or voted on his recommendation.
Right.
Okay. Is there a second to this?
I'll second it. Because I'm curious how it's gonna go right here. I'm second to go with that.
If you didn't just second it, it wasn't gonna die. Okay, there's a second. Motion is in place. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Okay, hold on. What are we... We're taking favor to do his recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But she's saying it's not to approve it.
Yes, but we're still taking action. That's the point I'm getting at. Is that this, we are taking action.
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
You voted opposite to what we're voting for.
No, I didn't.
No, see, Dr. Space, the motion is to not take action.
I know.
Okay, you already voted. And you?
And then it's just gonna be dead. But I... You see, he was asking if it was gonna, then we're gonna vote on...
That's right.
Well, if you... If the majority votes not to go with my recommendation, it's done. You don't go then to another motion.
Yeah, but the thing, I think it's confusing that you voted aye for Dr. Space's recommendation.
This is the first time that we, any of us have disagreed, so.
Yeah, okay, so let's... All right, let's start again. Well, what we made a motion to do was to go his recommendation.
Yes, exactly.
To not approve. It's... No, we're taking action. That's the point I'm getting at, at which I'm getting it.
Not to let it...
Emily made a motion.
His proposal was to wait until next year, next November.
So that's what we're... That's what the whole...
That's what it's... That's his recommendation to wait till next November, too.
And then you seconded that.
I understand that.
So you're gonna vote nay on that based on what you've said.
So... But what I'm saying is, we're actually taking action to his recommendation.
Right.
Right. So she can't not... She can't... I don't think she should have made a motion to not take action because we're taking action.
She didn't say that. She's making a motion to Dr. Space's recommendation.
Is she what he said? Her motion is to do what he said.
And then you seconded.
But now we're gonna take action on it.
Right.
Now you're gonna vote.
Now you're gonna vote. I mean, if you vote... If you vote yes on it, then you're agreeing with Dr. Space on what he wants to do. And then it'll be dead if the majority of the board votes.
If the majority of the vote.
Yeah. And you were one of the ones that voted yes a few minutes ago.
Okay, so I'm confused. I was confused right there. Can I retract and start again? Or not?
No, once you've done it, that's it. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, so saying that's... It was... So you wanted to...
Well, I'll still second her. I will still second her.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay.
And then I want you to start on that end. I'm just... So I am gonna say nay to what he said. I'm sorry for the confusion.
How about nay?
Nay.
You are confused. Okay, so, go ahead.
So now the motion dies?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request to allow the bond to be on the ballot in February.
Motion by Stewart to support NMSU. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Hold on for the vote, Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Stewart? Mr. Stewart, aye. Emily?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
I'll explain my interboard comments.
Okay, so that means that we're supported?
Yep.
Motion passes. Is that the way you want it? Okay, it's up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, this is the board, thank you.
Now I can speak. I had so many emails on this thing, it's not funny, but, you know, this one time, I'm glad I was the president and not have to vote and let my board members do the... Because it is difficult, but nevertheless, it's up to the board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate yours.
Thank you. All right. We move on. Item eight, citizens to address the board.
Nobody else wants to address the board, I will. I'm gonna do it on the line, think that's okay, though.
They want it recorded. Yeah, these are gonna be on television.
Hello? Tony Hicks. I came here tonight to speak to the board, which I appreciate this opportunity to do it, and for the people that are out here in the stands. I came here with one item, but since I've been here, it's come up two. The first one being is, why do you have citizens to comment after you take action on things that some of us might wanna comment on? Okay, so let's look at your agendas for that. If you have citizens to comment, you might wanna do it before you do things that we might wanna comment on, okay? That's the one thing. The second one is Veterans Day. Where do I start? All day today on TV, I saw wounded warriors. I saw school kids in Socorro not in school, but at the unveiling of the Vietnam Memorial Wall with 399 names of New Mexicans that died in the Vietnam War. Okay, that's what they were doing there. I spent today calling around the state trying to find another school district that is open on Veterans Day, and I can't. Another meeting, I'll guarantee you this, you guys are the only school board, city council, county commission, or anything meeting on Veterans Day, okay? To me, guys, it's just, it's wrong. It's totally wrong. If you look in the newspaper today, our newspaper here in town, what was in it? Veterans Day. Vets standing there with their quilts that were given to them by the Quilt Guild, okay? I understand that the calendar committee is the one that comes up with it and then you guys vote on it. And I appreciate Mr. Jones and Mr. Joel Stewart's vote last time to go ahead and take Veterans Days off. Mr. Esteban, I can't understand your vote, especially when you sit up here today and you tell us how you got to go hang out with your veteran buddies, but your veterans that work for your schools today were at work and they couldn't go and hang out with their veteran buddies, okay? I can't get on this enough, guys. You have so many holidays that you can move. You can move the Fourth of July. Everybody's off that day anyway, okay? You could move Columbus Day. That guy was lost when he found America, okay? A little lesson for you here. 1775, on November 10th, a bunch of guys in Tuncaver decided it was time not to spend taxes in the United States. They decided to have a tea party. That's why we drink coffee here in America, okay? Ever since 1775, seven months later, is when we decided that we were gonna break away and become our own nation. But the United States Marine Corps was established seven months before that, guys. Without your veterans, there is no Fourth of July, there is no Columbus Day, there's no Martin Luther King Day, there's none of those days. And it's time to quit making your veterans work on this day. Mr. Esteban got to go hang out with his veteran buddies today. Mr. Boschko and the other veterans, our sergeant major sitting right here, they didn't get to go there. This is not honoring our veterans. And when the government, federal government did this, this is what it was about. It was honoring people that have the intestinal fortitude, the heart, to become members of this nation, to protect our rights, so that each one of you can sit here and do what you do, guys. And I'm asking you please now to fix this for next year, okay? I guarantee you, you guys say that our teachers are teaching about veterans on Veterans Day. Shouldn't that be taught year-round in American history, New Mexico history, world history? This day should be spent with Mr. Esteban down at his, down at the memorial with his veteran buddies, okay? That's where the grandkids should be, not in school. They should be with the vets. And that's how strongly I feel about this, guys. I took up some time to come here and speak to you tonight. And, I mean, I don't need a comment from you guys, I just want you to fix this. It's total disrespect to the veterans. And this county has so many veterans, guys. This state has... We're like number two in the nation for vets, guys. Let's start respecting them, please.
Thank you, Marty. We appreciate your comments and will consider them when we adopt the 15 to 16 calendar. Any more citizens to address the board? We have a student that came from Laguna Acoma High School. Thank you. Would like to present. Student appreciation to Malika Bahi.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the board, Dr. Space, once again. I know that Malika, thank you, Jody and her mother for bringing her down, was in a long volleyball practice. I know Coach Duma keeps them to where the basketball teams are just chomping on the bit to get on the court. But it is a big, long practice because tomorrow's pregame because they do have the state tournament on Thursday. Just a couple of things about Malika. She is the oldest of nine siblings. She does take very challenging academic courses. She is all-state academically and in volleyball. She also is a leader on our basketball team. Girls were district champions in basketball and made it to the state semifinals. She was the powder puff star of the football game this year, which was a very rough game, I have to admit. It was clean, but it was rough, Malika, so she did score a couple touchdowns in that. She did this summer go to Princeton in New Jersey and took... She was in a leadership course out there. She would like to attend University of Kansas and become a Jayhawk. She is our homecoming queen, very popular around school because she is so respectful and is a great role model for our younger students. Malika, the school board is presenting you with this certificate of achievement for your outstanding performance as an academic all-state athlete for Laguna Acoma High School Fall of 2014, awarded to Malika Bahi. And we also do have a plaque for her in case she has a hole in the wall, she can cover it up. Malika Bahi, Academic All-State, LAHS. When she is playing volleyball, the kids ask me to introduce them and we introduce her as leaping Malika Bahi because she gets up seriously about three feet in the air. She can do it. So, once again, I'd like to thank you, Jody and Malika, for coming out after the long practice. It's really tough with one gym, everybody fighting over it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. We go on to item nine, budget and finance, the month, our keyness. We have an action item through October.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, distinguished members of the community, have, as in your packet, presented the payroll, accounts payable listing expenditures for the month of October. You will note that they were slightly less than what we were reported for the prior month. As I explained, there were three payrolls that occurred in the previous month, so that's why that month was a little higher. But for the record, the accounts payable total amount was $1,097,799. But for the record, the accounts payable total amount was $1,097,709.71. The activities payable was $101,334.14, and the payroll was $3,230,269.2. Now, stand for any questions, if there are any from--
Any questions?
From the board?
All right. Dr. Space?
I recommend approval as presented.
We have a recommendation by Dr. Space to approve the October expenditures--
I hope that was very clear.
Very clear. I recommend motion second. Mr. Jones? Mr. Stewart? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
If I may, also, I do, I do want to clarify the question that Mr. Samuel had in regards to the bonding. Currently, or the, the last bond that was approved was for $9 million in 2013. What that allows for us is to sell bonds up to $9 million, which is our bonding capacity. Essentially, right now, we've sold 2 million of those bonds. In addition, and that's strictly set aside for Los Alitos, 1 million was also sold for ed tech notes, strictly for technology, equipment and supplies. What that states is that as our bonding capacity continues to increase, or as we sell off our debt, or pay off our debt, we will be able to sell more bonds, up to the 9 million, if that, that answers your question. Currently, our residential mill levy, essentially the dollar per thousand dollar of assessed value, so what is charged to the taxpayers is $1, no, excuse me, $13, it's 6.623 cents for residential, $13.706 cents for non-residential, for every thousand dollars of assessed value. And that's currently what we have, as far as our bonding capacity. So, I don't know if that answers your question, or if that helps clarify in any way.
Thank you very much. And I might mention also, we had an audit, exit audit, yesterday?
Yeah, it was, it was yesterday, yeah.
Yesterday, and it went very well, very well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We go on to ten, superintendent's report, status report, action item, P-15, board election resolution.
And for, in the best interest of time, and for those that want to go to the concert, you have before, it's the regular school district election, so with two board positions being, being open, so this, Friday, your board secretary worked closely with a cutting law firm to develop the resolution, and I would recommend approval as presented. And we have the resolution in both English and Spanish.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, have a motion. Take a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Stewart? Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, we have the resolution. Board comments? Dean?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Like salute all the veterans out there, you know, like as Morty said, you know, I guess we could always visit that later, you know, I know he's not here, but the calendar does come before the teachers and the staff prior, so we can look at that next time we visit calendars. That's it.
Thank you. Dean?
I just, appreciation for the ROTC coming and the campus at least meet them and wish them good luck in all future endeavors and like Mr. Samuel said, as a former staff member, the calendar does come for the staff for approval, and we do try to adhere to their best wishes, because ultimately, they're the ones that, that make the determination on which one that they would approve, so we kind of have to go with their wishes. I do have, I'm sorry, I do have one indication from Mr. Tennicker, he left, but on one of the calendars, it has the pack, I packed Navy and at Saboyeta and then at Laguna Acoma.
Saboyeta.
So you might have, is it Saboyeta or something that has it down there?
No.
Saboyeta, so you might, I'm sure they clarified that. And other than that, it was good for me and I hope we get over to the certain ceremonies.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple things to clarify. I did, I know there was some confusion right there, and I made the motion because I did want it to go to the vote. And what I tried, well, I was gonna say, the reason I voted nay on that, and I'm more than happy to say, is because any general bond election to me is tough because not everybody that's voting for it has to pay for it. That is, you, that you gather that money back from a certain number of individuals, but not only that certain number of individuals gets to vote whether-- That is my biggest trouble with that, and that's why I voted nay. Okay, that's just some clarification. As far as the Veterans Day, I could never agree more with Morty Hicks and I do today. The reason that those teachers have a job and are in a free country are because of our veterans, and I think we should have it off, and I, I've said it every year, and I, or even if we, the whole school district doesn't take it off, we should let the veterans that work for us be off. I think we owe it to them, I mean, now, that's totally my opinion, and I, I would support the whole day off, every single day. And thank you guys for listening.
Yeah, I'd also like to, you know, thank all of our veterans, and also would like to see us have Veterans Day off next year, something that, I mean, I really, I know, I know we have a process in place that uses a committee and all that, but would encourage the board to consider that being an exception, and so we can certainly do that, and I think we should. You know, congratulations to the ROTC students that were here tonight, it's good to see them, and good to see them having continued success. What a, what a, you know, fantastic program that ROTC is, and I appreciate the ROTC leadership and good job that they continue to do leading that program. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for your comments, and I just want to redirect the, Mr. Hicks' comments to be addressed by our superintendent, given that, given him the clarification on the protocol that we have to follow and how it's done, so that we're clear on that, you know, just like Mr. Jones and Mr. Stewart and everybody else has said, sometimes it leans us southward, and we can't really, but we need to be clear of that. Other than that, I, I'm interested to get, get over to the fine arts, yes, I, I saw you. So, I'm looking forward to what, what they have to present over there this evening, but I encourage also, when we do have things going on, that we attend these things in the schools, because like I indicated earlier, the veterans did show up, and tribal members as well as some of the, in the local area there, and it made a difference for those kids to realize that, you know, there's a reason behind Veterans Day, and they did recognize that. I meant to bring some of the brochures and some of the things that they gave us, it was really meaningful.
Yes, sir. I apologize for the, not staying in the rules, but I've been listening to the topic this evening, and just so you know, I don't believe Gunny and I, or Master Gunner Sartino, or any other veteran would take off if the rest of the people we work with are out of duty, that's just the way we are as Marines. Secondly, is that I've never seen a, in the eight years that I've been with the school district, I've never seen that opportunity that you talked about for us to vote on the school calendar. I've never seen it, it's never presented itself here while I've been at Grants High School the last three years and the previous five years at Laguna Acoma. I, I think what's happening is being done not with every person's knowledge, so, just for your all situational awareness, so that maybe we can look into that--
Yeah.
And correct that. And again, I apologize for asking the question after the Robert Rule's orders, so we'll get it back. Thank you all for your time, have a good evening.
Thank you. Announcements, Wednesday, Thursday, November 19, 20, Trauma, Donakus, at Grants High School, performing our center, November 26, 28, district closed with Thanksgiving holidays, Tuesday, December 2nd, regular board, work session 5:30, boardroom, Friday and Saturday, December 5th and 6th, New Mexico School Board Association Annual Convention, make sure you get with Friday.
You should already, yeah, if you're going.
Tuesday, December 16th, regular board meeting, 5:30. Future agenda items. Ask per chairman. Motion for adjournment?
Certainly.